I have to go with that in the community to apply for RTMP funds. This committee reviews the applications to see that they meet the requirements. And then uses the scoring system that has been developed, sets as a committee. I think we met twice last year.
Yeah, we did meet twice.
Yeah, we did meet twice. I'm not sure why, but we met twice. And so there are seven voter holders, the mayor, council chair, the admin committee, the council chair, the community services committee, finance director, city administrator, and then two at-large positions from the public. We have yet to fill that. RTMP doesn't need to be determined until mid-March?
Yes. The RTMP packet's simply posted on the web probably within the next week or so. And I've actually had a couple people ask, because they're going to be out of town, if I could email one. I said if the email be the request, then I could email them the packet.
Okay, perfect. So, that's coming up. And so after that, what I have included in here, so let's stop for a minute. So, go back to the review of committees' agenda item page. In here, I've also listed at the bottom, I also included the TSP committee. And that's a committee that Rick has put together for the transportation.
Transport system plan.
Transportation system plan. And he has a list to add here. I hope they'll all keep this, so that you know what committees or what. He's actually added another piece of paper about the TSPs. And I believe he has a request for a council member.
Yes, yes. Council member was previously elected, new council member for this. Our next meeting is in March.
Anybody interested in the TSP?
Are you nominating Don?
I am. We have plenty of questions and a lot to say, so.
Yes.
And I am on this through my employment.
Yes, you're here already, not as a councillor, as a different hack.
Yes.
Okay. So at the bottom of my little spiel here, in addition to the committees that are established by resolution, councillors are asked to consider service on the following outside of Oak Ridge committees. L R A P A, an L R A P A budget. I know, but we are on this and so we can't sure. I serve as the on-the-board of L R A P A. We need an L R A P A budget person. I think I sent out an email to all of you pleading that we heard a no from Warren. So that means I have four possible yeses, right?
I can give you a no.
Okay, also Lane Act, they meet monthly. The mayor's roundtable that I attend at, the Southern Willamette Forest Collaborative. I'm actually on the board of that, although it wouldn't hurt to have a council member attend if they are interested. I don't know a lot about this fibrous consortium. Okay, this is something I know that Mr. Gomez attended, but I don't know much about it at all. And I will confess that for a whole year, I couldn't figure out why he was attending something to do with textiles. This is about telecommunications fibers. I know you couldn't, but it took me a whole year to figure it out.
The reason that's on there is because yours is better. If anybody's looking at this wrong here, that they tore it up along the highways and they put in fiber optics.
Right.
We own part of that fiber.
Okay.
Sort of. So, yeah, sort of. All of it has not been lit, but because we gave them some land and they have some access to some of the hubs for that, I'm not using the correct terms because this is not my area of expertise. We have a position on that board.
Oh, okay.
So we kind of get to decide when some of it gets lit up or how much. There's a little bit, that's why that's on there, has to do with that.
So will they reach out and contact us when there is a meeting to be coming? Who should I reach out to?
I'm assuming that Phil will probably get that email because all of those went to the city administrator.
Okay, okay. And then.
Maybe that one is something that we can just assign to the city administrator. Could. One of our city administrators is on that board.
And then also the Small Cities Forum. That's approved quarterly to any councillor who wants to attend. Stan and I are actually going to do it tomorrow at the luncheon up in Willamette. Hopefully, we're not going to snow on, right? No snow until four.
Yeah.
Okay, so we are going to that.
I want to go back to the L R A P A. Now, this is a budget committee?
L R A P A board, I am on the board, and L R A P A budget. L R A P A budget committees, I think they begin meeting in March and they go through like the end of April. And there is, they told me, four to five meetings during that time period, depending on how quickly they get through all of the budget. And it is, it is actually, I was there, I was in for some of them last year. I would like to say that I understood everything that was going on. I did not, because I am not a numbers person. I know how to do my checkbook and my taxes, so.
Think about it a little.
Okay, you think about it. I have to have a decision on that by mid-next week.
I can, I'll figure out by then. I got to figure out how much budgeting.
Yeah, because I can't do both. Yeah, I can't, I can't, I just can't do both. It's just a lot of time. And as it is, I go into. Okay, thank you.
One question.
Yes.
First, Stan, what's your background in?
For what?
What can I say, my identity.
Yeah, I. I was talking about the cities here or across the page?
I think all of them in general, but, I mean, like.
Look at me, I don't want any more.
So, I don't know if you have any kind of background in any way? Or, man, what's your background to, and what would you feel comfortable with?
Probably parks.
Sounds good. Yours, you got it.
You know what, parks? Hmm? That wasn't parks, no.
Chrissy, what are you mulling around over there, anything?
Probably between, I was actually interested in O D A C.
Okay.
Are any of these committees need more than one councillor?
They could, I suppose. They haven't.
I would say O D A C, T S P, and L R A P A are my interests.
We're just playing. Yeah. I mean, I would be saying, woo-hoo, L R A P A.
What was the one you mentioned, Lane Act?
Lane Act?
Yeah, what is that?
Okay. I should forward you this email. It meets monthly. Lane Act is a group that of movers and shakers and the communities in Lane County. Includes, it meets at O dot in Springfield and the O dot offices. It has a money component to it that comes. I don't know, I've only attended one meeting so far. And I can say that the meeting itself is pretty darn amazing to listen to all of the people who are in attendance to know everything about there is to know about trains, bridges, roads, how to get money out of the state, which I think is pretty remarkable in itself. And it takes a while to get up to speed with it. I wish I could tell you more about this. I don't really, I'm looking to see if I have it in the mail. It was just sent out. Well, I'll give you a second here. Denise Walters. Loading, doing it, almost there.
It's a lane area commission on transportation, so.
Thank you, dear.
That's what it has to do with.
Yeah, so expand all those words and that kind of gives you an idea of anything to do with transportation. So on the agenda coming up, they're going to talk about O dot updates, Metropolitan Policy Committee updates, Lane County and Metro Planning Organization, and Safety Plan Implementation, L T V Transit, State Transit Network and Fund Applications, Legislative Previews, et cetera. And how to enhance, the enhancement projects. Now, the projects are the things. I think a couple meetings ago, I may have mentioned that I was at a meeting. And what I discovered is that we get a pool of money for safety for roads. Highway fifty-eight is one of the most unsafe roads in Lane County, not to mention Oregon. And yet we are getting the smallest percentage of that money. And so you can imagine that I raised my hand and said, you know, I may need to do this, but it seems to me that if we have the most people killed on our road, shouldn't we also get the most money? And they go, whoa, 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 whoa. So, you know, it's that kind of thing, but the best for that is that. Yeah, I'm learning governmental talk.
I see that he is on the planning commission. He put in here as a witness as a citizen.
On which one? What do you mean that? T S P? Yes, the T S P. And this is the budget.
Yeah, he's on the budget committee, he's a citizen, is that?
And this is the T S P.
Right, right. Then that's okay.
Yeah.
So he's actually, but he's good for the budget on that.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So he's alive and kicking and I should be able to get, keep him on the budget council now, right?
I see you married it with it.
Okay, that was a great idea. So does that give you, do you feel like you've gotten enough information? A little more thorough understanding of what our committees are? So that we can go back and review the people who applied as well as those who may have applied since we opened up the application further? So that, what?
I'm sorry, as a citizen, I don't believe you've reopened any of the committees.
They should have, that all of it should have been extended. And that does not appear to have happened to you, to?
No, I believe we were going to wait until after this meeting before anything got posted.
Really? Oh, I'm wrong, okay.
No, they're not posted.
Okay, well, will we do that then, like the S P then? So that anyone else who wants to apply, since we have empty slots, can do that?
We've been accepting applications and someone brings them.
Oh, we have, okay, good.
Because you didn't close them, so we just bring them and we put them in the slots.
Okay, good, good.
And for charter review?
No, we haven't reviewed, that's the next charter review, thank you. Rick? I'm not supposed to call on anybody.
Yeah, I know. L C O, our ex-mayor used to go to those meetings and he attended them every month.
Yes, Lane Council of Governments. It's on that list, I forgot, I didn't say it, and yes, I am attending. I am attending L C O. Yeah, you have to. So good, thank you.
What's the Small Cities Forum?
So it is run by the League of Oregon Cities. And there is a Small Cities Network. And they move around quarterly, well, no, our Small Cities Network, I don't know where exactly it is. It's Southern Willamette. Is that right, Southern Willamette? They get together quarterly to discuss issues that are intrinsic just to small cities. And they usually have a speaker. It rotates and is hosted by the different small cities. We haven't hosted it for a while, so we probably will think about doing that coming up.
That might be interesting, that.
Okay, okay, good. Well, that's what we're going to attend next tomorrow. And Wilson has given me a feedback on that. Charter. Okay, so the first step to that is getting our code of ordinances together. We have a charter review that we will start. It's been recommended and I think we need to have a conversation, we need to at some point when we get the chance to have normal meetings, have a conversation. And yes, that was a dig, anyway, have a conversation about how we want to go about doing the charter review. And I think we need to have that conversation with our city administrator. I have never gone through a charter review and I know there's probably about five candidates that are public in here and say, I have.
I can probably find out.
I know you were, too. That's all. Sweet. So, I don't know the process of that. I know that Lane Council of Governments or the League of Oregon Cities can assist us with that in the charter review and the process and looking into it. I don't think we're ready. This isn't going to be, this is my understanding and the recommendation that I have received from both the League of Oregon Cities and the city administrators, that this is not an open anybody sign up for. This is a group that is convened by the council. And then the council chooses one or one, two, three people from each person. Each person can choose one person to sit down on this, rather than just an open, anyone can do it.
So basically, we would invite people to participate that we know would be a good fit for that.
And would be good. Anything that has to be done on the charter, of course, has to go to the voting public. This isn't something that we can do it to do it. It has to have their stamp of approval, so. I don't know much more about it than that. I always put a room around in my head for a while, but I haven't gotten further.
And when we get to that, I would definitely be interested in that. Because when I worked at DOJ, a lot of the stuff I did was work on legislative committees and legislative review, and then implementing new laws and setting policies and procedures around that.
I think if we do it, look at it, it's got to go to the attorney for approval.
Absolutely. It'll be a process. What I was told is this takes a year, you know. It takes a year. You want to, and with lots of different.
We want to map out all your laws and how they intersect and.
Absolutely.
All of the words, it's not even having to be used, right?
There is an O R S statute that defines what a charter review committee does. And it actually is very open to the public and can be done completely by the public without a council.
Interesting, you say that. Thank you. Like I said, this is all something new.
It's the people.
And I'm just really changing my part, so, thank you.
Just letting you know it's out there.
Thank you. Okay. So now that it's open, we have February twenty-first assigned to, to assign to people who volunteer to the committees and approve them and that type of thing. I do want to bring up, and I think I don't, I'm going to bring it up, but you guys know the answer. There are some people who have applied for committees who are unable to be here. And, you know, the question arose, well, you know, we really want to meet, but we just can't meet here without meeting. Can I still serve? And if I'm not mistaken, the charter says, no.
Right.
They have to be present and it's in the charter, it's not in the ordinances. And I don't know the rules, and forgive me for saying this anyway around that.
So if there's a way for a councillor to participate by phone in the meeting, why could we allow that? Under that circumstance, can we look into that option?
Rick, do you think that's a good option? Is it, the person can follow up? So the other question would be, is could that, could the applicant have a proxy? So, would that be a violation of charter? Would we be stretching it too much to say they can have a proxy?
Doesn't say that it can't. Since it's not addressed, if the council wanted a consensus that they could have proxies, then they probably could.
Okay. So remembering that we can't vote on anything right now, because we're in work session. It's something for you to be thinking about and we will bring up again when we can vote, so if we can.
So would we be able to bring that up again to vote on before we're looking at Phil and his vacancies?
If I get a consensus from the council at a work session, can it, is it valid enough to, excuse me, to communicate to the public that that is what we will do and then vote on it on the twenty-first?
If you have a consensus, then consensus is everybody has to rather head up and down. At that point, then at your meeting, you would announce that you are allowing it. You wouldn't necessarily have, but you're going to allow proxies to appear for people applying.
Before I have that consensus on the twenty-first, though, would I have the legitimacy to inform the public that they can do a proxy and they can do a phone-in?
Was that a stretch from what was on our agenda?
What?
As far as that decision?
Is that a, well, it's part of the committee process, and I just want, yeah. Thank you for bringing that up. Because I.
So we have a meeting next week.
Thirteen, that's when the.
Yes, we do, and we can tack a business piece onto that and be able to vote. That way we won't have to greatly end trouble.
There you go.
And we got time to research it a little more.
That sounds good. So you make a note of that on the thirteen, the full out-of-business section, business piece to it. Thank you. Good job, council. Okay, let's stop. All right, so let's move on to the Code of Ethics. We, we as a council adopt the Code of Ethics by ordinance. And I'm going to have, I've asked Rick to pass it out. It's the Personal Code of Conduct and Ethics for the City of Oak Ridge. Where the mayor and council, boards, commissions, committees, volunteers, and staff. Call for those of us that have already signed this, I would suggest that you sign it again. It's a new year.
Yeah, remember that.
I'm in a new position, you're not, but.
Yeah, but I think, remember, last time we discussed something about this? I think we need to go back and verify that everybody has signed it.
Yeah, and so what we're going to do is just, these are all new, they haven't.
Yeah, but not just us. I'm talking about, this goes for all the employees and all of the.
Yes, that's a difference. But I don't, I don't want to postpone having council sign this, but you're right. Thank you for the reminder to make sure that, you know, commissions, committees, volunteers, and staff have all signed that.
Yeah, we need to, you know, record that so that everybody knows.
Okay.
So has there been, there's been discussion of making this an annual?
Well, once you sign it, it's supposed to be.
Once you sign it.
What I really need to do is, because all the time I've been on the budget committee, I have yet to sign one of these.
Well, once you sign one of them, you just sign them.
No, I know now, I'm talking about.
Yeah, I know, that's why they say everybody's supposed to sign one, and I guarantee you that not everybody has signed one.
So let's move on from discussing whether other people have signed it and make sure that we understand what we're signing. How many of you have not seen this before?
I've read it all.
I've seen it in all these new applicants.
And let's not worry about the new applicants, let's stick to just council for now. Bobby, you've read it? Stan, have you read this already?
Yes.
And Chrissy, have you read this? Do any of the council have any questions about this? So I am just going to read number eighteen. Everyone has the primary responsibility to assure that ethical standards are understood and met and that the public can continue to have full confidence in the integrity of city government. This Personal Code of Conduct shall be considered to be a summary of ethical conduct. And we are asked when we sign this to affirm that we have read, understood the Personal Code of Conduct Ethics for the City of Oak Ridge, for the Oregon. For the City of Oak Ridge, Oregon, mayor and council, boards, commissions, committees, volunteers, and staff. And may acknowledge that we may be removed from the appointed board, committee, or commission by the city council if the conduct falls below ethical standards. As a volunteer or staff member appointed by the city administrator or his or her doesn't mean, I acknowledge that they could be disciplined or removed from the position of, if conduct falls below these ethical standards. You will note that it does not say anything about city council members.
Because you.
Because you can't.
But because in the original one, when we get as councillor, if we do the, to abide by.
That's right. And so signing this, if it's turned that you didn't do it, council still cannot remove a councillor. So that's why that's missing, because I had someone ask me about that.
You can't get rid of it?
No, I can't get rid of it, according to this piece of paper. So, if you're comfortable and you are ready to sign this, I would suggest that you sign it and turn it into, into Suzie before you leave, so that she has it on record. Make sure that you date the signing. If it is the third today.
I think Suzie should sign it, I think we all should.
Maybe I already did.
My head is like swimming, so I'm going to pass these down and just pass them all away.
I think I made a mountain or something.
Okay, good job. Okay, so in this last fifteen minutes, we're going to talk about the trade selection process. So I have some questions here that Bobby put together. And I haven't checked my email. Did you get my email first?
I got it right now.
You know, I'm having a heck of a time with that. I, you know, maybe if you turned your signs so that I could see your last names. I, I, you are welcome to correct me until I learn. And no, it's not fine, because that's one of the things that I think is important. But it's just hard for me to look up at you and not call you, yeah.
Someone calling me?
I've called a lot. Okay, so Chrissy, I.
Councillor Hollitt.
Did you get my email a little bit earlier?
I did, I got it right before I came here. But I actually have some appointments next week to go into the attorney's offices tomorrow. I mean, I'm sorry, not tomorrow, next week.
Okay.
So if there are two councillors who want to join you, that would be, sure, okay, Bob.
So I'll let you guys coordinate that?
I'll send an email out like a day or two to everybody and then they'll suddenly know when I'm going.
I'll be in Salem one day and couldn't do a meeting today. But if it's Monday.
I'll take lots of notes and.
Okay. And so these questions that I have here that Bobby put together, I shared with, with, the councillor Whitney put together, and I shared with councillor Hollitt, are reference questions. So councillor Hollitt and councillor Whitney are going to, and I are going to split up the reference question. So would you know that? You want me to read the questions? Does it make sense? You're okay with that? John, you care, I can tell it, I can tell, okay. What do you think of when you hear the word Oak Ridge? How do you see yourself representing Oak Ridge? Have any of your attorneys worked as a court clerk in Lane County Circuit Court or in the local federal court? If so, which judge did he or she work under and in what areas of the law? Do you regularly track federal, state, and county legislative and local law changes? And if so, how do you do this? When tracking changes, what is your primary focus? How would you communicate any changes with your client? If there's a law change that impacts a city, do you follow up with the municipality you serve and make sure that you're adequately addressing any needs or changes within their city? How would you build this? These are the questions that I got from councillor.
So in case you're wondering, I saw you search questions. So I'm wondering about the court clerk. I think it's really important to know if any of their staffer or attorneys have worked as court clerks, specifically in Lane County, because when you have somebody that's worked under judges in Lane County, they have, they've networked within our current area.
Right, but most all of them attorneys were asked that that day when they had the meetings or?
But they were asked it, but I think it's important to ask it again, because it didn't get very specific.
Well, actually, they did. They actually.
I, they didn't always say which judge and what.
They did, they did. They said the judge's name.
But I'm looking for what areas of the law to.
What areas of the law.
Okay, okay, all right. I think that's important, too.
Okay.
To know, so they say, oh, it's family law, okay.
Why, did you review all the stuff they did? Because what the lady said, the attorney said tonight, that was in one alone, exactly what took place.
Councillor Hollitt, will you send me any questions?
Yeah, I have some more.
In local finance, a little bit asking the same questions, reference questions. And then can we just, if we get the, we're going to have a discussion. I was thinking we could just send each other what the answers were, but it's not going to be that easy. We're going to have to actually talk about it. I see one heading.
It might be interesting to put it into like, to have a list of questions and then like an Excel sheet. It, it might be interesting to put it into like, to have a list of questions and then like an Excel sheet of some sort where you have the list of questions and you have each, right? What's going to kind of how they each answer the questions, so you can easily compare?
Yeah.
It's just a thought.
I was actually thinking about doing a presentation for you at your next meeting, and I go to the office and I actually go to that, like, take some pictures and maybe bring back a little bit more information to add to it, and then combine it with, um, those questions that we're talking about, so that the public can see.
That's what I do. Mr. Haby thinks it's a quick. Thank you, Counselor Haby. And thank you, Counselor Haby. Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, Dawn.
I'm a little confused, um, I thought you said you're calling references.
I know.
So, doesn't that mean you would be calling other people that are using those same attorneys and asking them what their opinions about attorney is? Or are you actually calling the attorneys that you interview?
We are calling their references, you are right. You are very.
So.
Bobby, your great question, I mean, those are my, your great questions, but they're not questions that we've used.
No, I thought these were from when we went to visit.
Oh, we'll see, you and I were on different page. Okay, so these are great questions for you guys, go for it, go for it.
Yeah, and then references would be different.
Yes, references would be different, and that's what I'm hoping to do, the call on, just reference, just to see how they perform.
Don't mention my name.
What they did on, I want good records. Okay. Do you have any other questions? Oh, upcoming meetings and events. Uh, let's see, so we know we're meeting on the thirteenth?
Yep, twenty first.
Right, and then the twenty?
First.
First. Next week, Wednes, next week Wednesday? I'll make sure I say this right. Next week Wednesday, um, I will again be starting talking with the mayor at Lion Mountain Bakery at nine AM to eleven AM.
Who's there?
Whoever she is will be there. And, um, and I'm just reminding counselors that.
Does that mean you're buying?
Uh, no, I am not buying, as a matter of fact. And why am I buying, but you're talking? If anyone wants to come and chat, I will remind counselors you are not buying. Because I don't need a quorum showing up. Yes.
Next, the twenty-first, we're appointing a new counselor. Can you let us know how you want our planning to do that voting selection process?
Yes.
So that we have a heads up?
Absolutely, absolutely, and it'll be a little bit cleaner, but it will be very similar to what we did before, so it will be a ballot process. So that it will be open to the public, they will know who voted for whom. But we will vote, send it, they will tally it and read out loud.